All right, go ahead, call the city council meeting to order. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Jeff, please call the roll.
As Councilor Pete told here.
Here.
Councilor Sheldon here.
Councilor Walker.
Here.
Councilor Exner.
Here.
Councilor Hopkinson.
Here.
Mayor Paulian.
Here. All right, let's go and get this going. I'll start with the review of tonight's agenda. And we will call for any changes to the agenda. Will they go to public comment? There is no submitted public comment either online or in person this evening. We'll then go to the consent agenda that has our city council meeting minutes from our November fifteenth meeting. A memorandum of understanding for a water purchase agreement as well as resolution twenty twenty one thirty four on the transfer of jurisdiction of southeast Crescent Lane. Under resolutions, we have a public hearing resolution twenty twenty one twenty three adopting changes to our system development charges. Under old business, we have our Sandy net business I G A with Clackamas broadband exchange discussion. Under new business, we have planning commission appointments, comprehensive plan consult contract approval. As well as police body worn cameras update and purchase authorization. Well, then round up our evening with our report from our city manager in our committee and council reports. With that, is there any changes to tonight's agenda?
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Like to pull the which was on the consent agenda, pull up the memorandum of understanding for the water purchase agreement for a brief conversation if we could.
And there must be a reason we can't just have the conversation within the consent agenda portion of the agenda.
That's fine.
Okay, cool. Any other suggested changes of the to the agenda? All right, as I mentioned earlier, there is no public comment suggested submitted, so we'll go ahead and go to the consent agenda. I'm now open for discussion. I think Councilor Hopkinson might have something on the water purchase agree.
I'm just, I was trying to refresh our memory on the the nature of the decision we made to pursue not joining and why we still have to be part of the M O A. If we're not going to immediately be back in or we're looking to maybe pursue an alternate. Or is this just a dual pass strategy?
Essentially, you know, the council's decision was out of the two options was to connect to basically buy untreated bull run raw water and treat our own with our own treatment facility. But then in the interim, explore additional water options such as groundwater, bolster our sources. This M I U is basically to negotiate towards a new agreement, which Portland certified that they want to do. We haven't though like two thousand twenty eight, but they they find your notice. And so this is basically just saying, hey, we're all going to work together to negotiate with a new agreement for our wholesale customers it's going to be. And at the time we pulled it was because we had the council had not made that decision yet on you know, connecting, not connecting, building our treatment. So.
So, so I have, I have some concerns. I have some concerns about entering into an M O U unless the M O U literally in the way I thought I tweeted is not the case, but literally means nothing other than that we're agreeing to potentially agree down the road. Because without any knowledge of what this filtration plant that they're putting in is going to cost and knowing that the ratepayers will bear the burden of a right now one billion dollar in rising project. Also knowing that Tuolumne Valley, Gresham, Troutdale, and a few other areas have pulled out of Portland water. That the number of people that then they can charge for that filtration plant becomes much smaller. So knowing that we've already increased our rates, knowing that Portland will be increasing their rates, but is unwilling to say how much those will be. I'm not real happy. I'm not real comfortable with saying anything with. So.
I guess it it just goes back to our last past discussion. It was like, what alternatives do we have though?
Well, and we were going to look at looking at those alternatives, and I think we had this conversation four or five months ago, and here we are again.
Yep.
So where are we in that process? And I realize it's not been that much time, but I also know that this contract is good till two thousand twenty eight.
That's is it is it with this M O U or is it going to be terminated early?
It would be terminated early because Portland has given notice. So it's a five year notice. So I think expiration expiration date of the current agreements in two thousand twenty six. This doesn't commit us, remember. This is just to start negotiations. The council can reject the agreement, you know, before when after we negotiate something, I think.
Well, I didn't think I didn't think it committed us. I wasn't worried about that.
Yeah.
But I, you know.
Our our position, I think the council would agree is that that exact thing recognizing that the infrastructure for buying raw bull run water is significantly less than say the infrastructure needed to pump it across, you know, the metro area to other wholesale.
Yeah.
And so we would want to negotiate to make sure that our rates are reasonable to take that into consideration that, you know, we're just it's one pipeline. It's right there. You know, we shouldn't have to pay for the infrastructure to to hold water and move it to the across the metro.
Yeah, I just, I don't, I don't want us to get in a in a position, and I know that we've already given direction to look at alternatives, but I don't want to find us in a position where we've signed this M O U. This is, this is the direction that we go down, and in four years, we're looking at crazy rates coming out of Portland, and we have no option. That's what I don't want.
I I guess included with that is is that if we don't think that the wild water that comes from Bull Run is acceptable by either expenses or taste or quality and so on, that we have the option to look at other places as well. I want to keep my options open as much as possible. I guess that's as long as that M O U that you're talking about here does that. I'm okay with that, but I I think we got to look at at least have as many of the variable options open to us as we can. Because we may not be that we want that bull run water, maybe some of the other solutions.
Can I ask more about the termination date?
Sure.
So the M O U list, the earliest, what is the earliest termination date? So how it phrases it? Eariest contract termination being six thirty twenty twenty eight for Sandy. But you mentioned Portland's already exercised their five year, right? Does that mean? How how do we reconcile twenty eight with twenty six?
They want the new agreement in place by two thousand twenty six. Mike, what what's the super? We're we're still okay until two thousand twenty, but yet they want a new agreement for everybody by two thousand twenty six. Is that how?
They'd like to, the city, they can't pull the trigger on the five year clock until um, I think August of twenty twenty three. So we're the, I think one other wholesale customer has a different schedule. All the other wholesale customers had to make a decision in June of twenty twenty one, and they have. And this and this doesn't obligate the city to buy water from their treatment plant from book from Bull Run from city of Portland. This just says that if we they're negotiating all their wholesale agreements, and they want to have one wholesale agreement for all users. And they're cut getting rid of the twenty seventeen or eighteen kind of custom agreements that every user has. So they want to consolidate it. So this doesn't obligate us to buy treated water from city of Portland and as Counselor Hogan's and point out, doesn't but obligates to buy untreated water, any water from city Portland, just authorizes us. It says we're going to participate in negotiating the new contract language.
So I guess my my qualification, I'm happy that we have this twenty eight day because that gives us to six twenty eight to figure out what our plan B is or A. And whether that's building a client out to get unfiltered water or whatever. And I guess the the I'm fine with the M O A. I just don't want to see us have that M O A make us make a decision on twenty twenty six when everybody else signs. That would terminate our other give that would basically take two years off our agreement. That that I don't want to see. So as you do your negotiations, you got to figure out how to keep that option open.
I think we will be on our way towards our solution, whether that's expanding the sources or building a treatment facility at that.
Right. Okay.
Okay. Is there a motion? To adopt the consent agenda.
Make motion that we approve of consent.
Sir, a second.
A second.
There's a motion by Counselor Pete sold and a second by Counselor Hogan said, man, you guys are making me work. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed nays. Motion carries. And moving forward to resolutions, we have public hearing twenty twenty one dash thirty three. I will open this public hearing twenty twenty one dash thirty three at seven forty two. Uh, Mike, do you have a staff report?
Uh, yes, you know, as the council knows, and has and and as we have seen over the past couple of months, construction prices are rising and at a pretty good clip. And so, you know, we do this every year where we update our systems development charges based on a recognized index, the state statute that governs S T C's allows cities to do this. It's built into our methodology. We did it last year about this time. And so I can't remember what the change was last year. But this year, you know, the change since since the last time we've done this, it's been six point two four percent in the index for all three S T C's that are subject to it. And we recommend that we keep this index or we keep the S T C's updated at least annually. So we can keep up with rising construction costs because they will most certainly be higher than they are now. At the, you know, the plan horizon on some of these capital projects goes out twenty years. And in the transportation system plan has a twenty year horizon. Waste Water Master Plan have has a twenty year horizon. So we want to make sure that we keep up with these with construction costs by adjusting it annually.
All right, thank you, Mike. And so now we'll go to public testimony. Please try to avoid repetition if someone else has already expressed the same thoughts. It is sufficient to state that you agree with the statements of a previous speaker, even if that is all that you say. For those joining us in person this evening, please raise your hand to indicate that you'd like to speak and wait to be recognized. If you're participating online, click the raised hand button and wait to be recognized. If you're participating via telephone, dial star nine to raise your hand and wait to be recognized. I'll call on each person when it's their turn to speak. Each participant will receive up to three minutes to testify. Jeff will let you know when you have twenty seconds remaining. Our our city council rules require each person states her name and address for the record. All right, are there, I will now call for any testimony on this proposal.
Hey, Mayor, I'll just take a look at the list for any raised hands. Hey, Mayor, I do not see any raised hands.
All right, Mike, do you have a staff recap and recommendation?
Uh, just I did notice a mistake in the staff report there under the budgetary impact. I use a canned staff report for these, and this is last year's I updated. I thought I updated all the numbers, but I did not update the revenue projected revenue increases under the budgetary impact heading, and it would be a six point two four percent increase instead of a six point one percent. But the numbers, the biennial increases in that paragraph are correct. It's just the percentage amount is off by a little bit.
Sir, I'm now calling for a motion to close the public hearing.
Make motion and close.
There are second.
Second.
A motion by Counselor Pete sold and a second by Counselor Exner to close the public hearing. All those favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nays. Motion carries. All right, discussion. Inflation's high.
Let's keep up with that.
Have we done this every year? I mean, we didn't used to do this, and it was part of the we talked about, you know, years ago, culture not doing it until we need it. If we ask the council, ask, hey, let's kind of do this more regularly. So that's the history behind it because we didn't use to do that. We had had to play catch up in the past. So. So it's good to stay having these leap frogs.
All right, is there a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty one thirty three?
Make a, I'll make a motion.
Irresolute.
Resolution. I make a motion to approve resolution twenty one twenty twenty one dash thirty three and direct staff to make changes to the master fee schedule to reflect the adjustments to the transportation water and sewer system development charges.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a motion by Counselor Walker, a second by Counselor Sheldon, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nays. Motion carries. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Mike. And next, under old business, Sandy Net Business Sandy Net Business I G A with Clackamas Broadband Exchange. Jordan?
Yeah, and so Greg Booster I T Sandy Net Director will be presenting the the business plan and and this I G A. This is the second time this item has counsel, but the major change here is, as you've seen in the the staff report in the council packet. Greg put together the the business plan as requested by council. The council had a number of questions about the I G A and sort of the the intent and more the the business plan behind it in terms of revenues, expenses, the costs and benefits of this arrangement, this partnership with C B X. So I want to just thank Greg for putting in the time and and effort and and putting together this business plan. He put a lot of work and detail into this plan, and I know how busy they are as a department to to be able to pull this together while also making sure that our town has great high speed internet and are being connected. So my thanks to Greg and and also to the Sandy Net Advisory Board for for reviewing this at least a few times. I know it's been in front of them to to provide input and a recommendation to the city. So Greg, I know you have a presentation and and highlights and things, but I'll hand it off to you now.
All right. Thank you, Jordan, and good evening, council. I am back to kind of revise in addition to the I G A from last time. I have prepared a business plan which should lay out various options and kind of our our plan for should we enter into an intergovernmental agreement with Clackamas County here. So I do have a slideshow that I will go ahead and pull up on the screen here for every everyone. And I'll kind of just take it away. And so this slideshow is a kind of a deviation of the staff report, which is actually a more revised version of the executive summary in the business plan itself there. So while parts of it might seem a little bit redundant here, I'm hoping some visuals will will kind of help show some other pieces that might not be available just on paper there. So kind of diving into kind of the purpose and objectives, I'll cover a couple of quick key points here. One of the the main purposes and drives for us looking at a an I G A and a kind of a partnership with C B X is for us to kind of grow our medium and large customer base within for Sandy Net, which are more businesses that kind of exist currently outside of the city limits. There the few that are within city limits are tend to be higher chains or those that might prefer a larger national provider or something. And so we are looking at various areas that offer those medium and large businesses that would cater towards having a very competitive price and reliability for their service and those that are within a decent range of Clackamas County's existing network, making it easy to hook up and and utilize. And using additional revenue, which is a very big main driver for this project is used to increase funding for various different sources. It can be used to fund additional F T Es and employees, which would allow us to cross train, but also just continue to add to our overall capacity. And, you know, allow certain individuals to do things and enjoying their weekends and also being able to not constantly be running at a hundred percent, which can happen at times when there's just the the certain level of crew. So working towards is always a goal of our team to be able to do work right correctly to reduce having to do repetitive or repeated work and make sure that we're taking our time and doing it correctly the first time there. But it also plays into being able to offer certain things that we currently don't have the ability to do, which are things such as we can support or off hours or even holiday, whether it's done through an employee or contracting company. Call centers for basic questions and customer support do exist and are are highly popular for that specific reason where you just need to answer some general questions. Major issues, things like that are always handled by your on call team, and a lot of issues get resolved on next business day when when staff returns back to the office there. And probably most importantly is paying down existing debts, which is Sandy Net does have after it did expand and build out a fiber optic network to past every home in Sandy. It it does have a revenue bond that it's been paying across and seeing it has continued to expand since then. So it's it's in the best interest, obviously, to get your debts paid off as soon as possible, and we see this as a potential option that the sooner that those debts can be paid off, the sooner that we can look at reinvesting, not only in these also these options that I've listed before, but also additional ones which are in the business plan, but not for the sake of this conversation or what I'm presenting on right now. So what we are aiming to do is work with C B X to provide fiber optic services to businesses that are outside of our current serving territory and within Clackamas County. And we would be charging two hundred and twenty five dollars a month of recurring costs for gigabit symmetrical service. And of that, our split revenue is fifty three to forty seven, where we get to maintain and keep a hundred and twenty dollars a month, and C B X would have a hundred and five dollars each month there. And so hopefully you guys can see this map here, but this is a map of somewhat recent of C B X's current fiber optic network. And as you can see, they do own a lot of assets across the county there, and they do offer a ring, but they do go through major towns and and cities in this area here. And upon discussing with the program director or program manager over at C B X, it is estimated that their current fiber optic network passes about four thousand businesses within a thousand feet of their existing lines. So there definitely are a lot of businesses in Clackamas County, but these numbers were originally calculated when Sandy Net attempted to file for a grant through the E D A grant back in the summer of twenty twenty to do a similar project, especially after some of the effects of COVID had just hit. And so unfortunately, we weren't we're not rewarded any funds for that there. And so quickly, we began to look at additional options to be able to do this ourselves. And during the January and February of two thousand twenty one, we worked on coming up with an I G A that mutually met both of our our needs and and sought to find a way to be able to make this project a reality. And so one of the big pieces is obviously, and it's it's defined in the I G A is to separate the requirements and the responsibilities of each party here. So between Sandy Net and C B X from being kind of a service provider, I'd say that we have about four major legs that support our entire operation, and that is our customer support. The ability to send out bills and receive funds and then manage the network on top of your existing physical plant, which is the fiber optic. Now Sandy Net has a lot of plants, an outside plant itself within city limits. And Clackamas County, obviously, from the picture has a lot more. But based on the way the I G A is and how you see the split ratio between the the revenue is that it's it's meant to support those those areas or those centers. And so C B X does maintain and in the I G A is defined as maintaining, owning and operating, upgrading the fiber optic network that they have includes building it out for additional customers and as they continue uh, continue to grow. And for the Sandy Net side, we would continue to do our customer support, which we already do for well, we do all these operations, but for our Sandy Net and residential business customers inside city limits already handle billing and our network operations, which means connecting us upstream to other providers and to the internet as a whole. And so to dive into some of the costs here, because it's it's very important to make sure you're not looking at a a project that's not going to make money with the intent of paying down debts. I will kind of briefly go over kind of some of the installation costs and our operational expenses. I've admitted capital expenditures. There are some minor ones for infrastructure, which are rolled into the operational expenses that I will explain. But we'll start kind of with the nonrecurring one time installation costs, which is includes direct materials, direct labor and the overhead essentially. So your basic pieces for building a cost. And so your direct materials are going to be looking at your your equipment. It's going to be looking at optics pieces that are needed to connect to that network and get it set up. The direct labor is going to be the the installer going out and their time to travel and install the equipment. And then the overhead includes administration, talking to the customer, filling out service requests, provisioning the equipment with the network engineer, turn up those pieces as well. And then in addition, those all start to start adding up in costs there. There is a one time installation cost that is billed out to the customer of five hundred dollars. And in addition to five hundred dollars, there is a minimum twelve month term that the customer signs into to guarantee that we do break even and make money off of a customer should they decide to not stay as a customer past twelve months there. So the idea of the installation cost is to bring that break even point down from where it was before. And then in addition to the term guarantees that we're not putting ourselves at unnecessary risk when we start adding customers. Now, from the operational expenses, these are our monthly expenses and pieces that tie into that each customer we had does add an expense to the network to be able to support and maintain. Those would include things like power, co-location or space to be able to house equipment, I P addresses that we.
I just did a forced mute. Hey, Greg, question from council here.
I just, sorry, to clarify your installation costs. So the customer pays five hundred dollars and we end up covering an additional three hundred and eighty nine dollars of the installation cost. And
Yeah.
Um. Out of the next several months worth of fees. Is that what I'm understanding?
Uh, yes, out of the the total cost of direct materials, labor and overhead, you subtract the installation cost, and that gives you the remaining that would be paid off through the revenue minus operational costs until it breaks even. So in a sense, it's in a further slide, but the break even point is about three and a half months before you start making actual profit on the customer there.
You you pay monthly for three and a half months. That's about the break even point, and then we start going into pure profit.
Pretty much.
I mean, the cost of the vehicles to get there, the cost of the facility, the.
This is over. That's all in this.
Yeah.
No, it's on page twenty five of this report.
The breakdown for the operational and installation costs are exhibits. B, C, and D is revenue. So that's pages fifty and fifty one, I believe. That would show the the cost for equipment and then the activity of travel time and installation time required, what we predict to be on average for these. And so the and I can I can dive into these a little bit here is that based on the roles on which Sandy Net and C B X are operating. The the amount of information installation required from our team would be very minimal, a matter of programming a switch in the office, driving it out there and plugging it in. It is the the responsibility of Clackamas County to provide tested and operational fiber already at the premise that we can interface with simply. So there's actually very little work besides simply taking existing equipment that we've already programmed, mounting it, turning up and verifying, and then being on our way. At that point, the the it would either be a contractor or a internal I T department that would most likely perform the cutover when their team is ready to make the switch from their existing provider to us. And I will, if that's answered the question, I can move back over to kind of the operational expenses here. And I apologize. I don't think my camera was showing that entire time. So I'm sorry you're just staring at a a screen here. But the operational expenses are what it's going to cost us to be able to serve that customer on a month to month basis. And so the it's broken out into two pieces here, because I do want to touch on a little bit of risk that's potentially here. We do look at being able to use an excess of ports that we already have in our network. Excess are ports that are currently unutilized on our devices that we have no intention of using but are already there and paid for. For example, you might put a switch out at a location or inside of a data center or closet that you might utilize to seventy percent. And the remaining ports are available because you buy switches in a certain number of ports or that 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 equipment, but you don't utilize it fully. So those ports are available to be utilized but are currently and don't have any active plans to be utilized. And so we do have a a few ports that are available for us to utilize towards the beginning where we could add up to thirty four customers before we actually have to purchase additional hardware and I P transit or upstream. and IP transit or upstream internet service to handle additional load. And so that's why it's broken out into two pieces up until thirty-four customers. Each customer has a monthly operational cost of fifteen dollars to include power, co-location costs and upstream provider costs. And then once we get above thirty-four customers and, and have to purchase additional hardware, that cost following that we add customers in a, in a proper fashion and meet our projections would be at twenty-five dollars a customer. Now, when you purchase a new piece of hardware and it's the first customer on it, that customer is bearing the entire cost of that split across the lifespan of the hardware. But as you add additional customers, that operational cost will continue to drop. So, which means that after we hit thirty-four customers, it's important that at that point, when we, we sit back and look and say, do we need, do we continue on this? Do we reevaluate it? We have the option to be able to assess and add some of these customers with very little risk to be able to really sit back and make sure that we are, uh, we are getting what we're looking for essentially. And I think that before we, we look at that, we can also reevaluate some of these recurring costs and adjust these and knowing them a little bit differently and also adjusting based on when exactly that timeframe would be. As we look at the, at the revenue projection chart, we wouldn't hit those thirty-four customers until January of the third year, which means that prices could drop, you know, inflation could change all those pieces there. So it gives us a chance to really kind of reevaluate and the formulas are there already to kind of just plug in the numbers and see where it comes out. So the, moving on to kind of the revenue projection graph here, this does take into account that we have added, we add thirty-four customers before we purchase additional hardware. You will see that the profit line does dip after the thirty-fourth customer because of that additional hardware and then we'll continue to grow there on out. That is the point where you do have to purchase additional hardware. And then this is projecting that we add a total of ninety customers, which is the max amount of customers for this particular hardware that we have planned to use would allow for. And we have said that we set a goal of five years to add ninety customers, which is to grow at one point five customers a month or two customers every three months. And the pricing in this does include an annual three percent inflation on those operating costs that can inflate, things like electricity and transit costs. But things like the actual equipment costs, once it's purchased, we're simply making sure that, that we're paying for that, that equipment across its lifespan. So certain ones reflect that three percent, other pieces don't necessarily need to. And this information does not show that customers that may or may not cancel. This also would include things like, and one of the risks is also looking at customers, businesses that may or may not go under or close up shop. And for that reason, obviously, you're, uh, you would see some cancellations there. But from my experience, uh, working with businesses in Sandy is that when you provide a competitive environment and price, unless they have a really bad experience, customers are likely to stick with you. So I wouldn't think that it would be out of the question for a customer to stick with us multiple years. And when you do look at cancellations and adding additional customers, you're simply looking at installation costs, but also potentially the reuse of certain hardware in certain cases. So you can actually reduce it in, in some areas there. So coming kind of to the last slide of these analysis pieces, we come to the break even point, which does come to about three and a half months, actually closer to the April side there to with, including the five hundred dollar installation cost before we start making a profit on that customer. So this graph represents that if we hook the customer up in January, by April, we are making a profit off that customer. Minimum of a twelve-year agreement, or sorry, twelve-month agreement would allow us to make sure that we've covered our bases and made it worth our time to be able to add that customer should they ever cancel after the first twelve months. And finally, a couple of last pieces, they aren't in the slide here, so I can actually go ahead and stop sharing, are that this IGA also has a couple of pieces regarding to termination, making sure that we're trying to take into account as much risk as possible and minimizing it. The termination pieces and the IGA allow us to be able to quickly and easily terminate an agreement should we need to for any reason whatsoever, whether, uh, for any number of reasons. But it also allows us, not underneath the termination, but to kind of pick and choose. This is designated to be a partnership or working with the other entity, which means that we have the ability to pick and choose if a customer is worth adding. And so likewise, if we bring forth the county, uh, an opportunity or a customer that wishes to connect to the network, the county gets to make the decision on whether or not they actually can build out to it or want to build out to it or if it's feasible. And we have the same option as well. And so if, and I forgot to mention it earlier when it's kind of separating these roles here is that what this kind of role is set up as is what you common see, commonly call an open access model. Whereas somebody owns a network, typically a fiber optic network, and then leases out pieces of it to other companies or people that of interest that would like to utilize it. And doing so, that's what Clackamas County does is they own a fiber optic network, but they also lease out a lot of these plates, these, these pieces of fiber to other customers of theirs and other entities. So we have the ability to ride across it just like anybody else does. What this partnership allows us to really do is work on providing that service and meeting kind of the needs and, and what we're looking, uh, what the county kind of has a mission for and what we kind of have a mission for. And so I think it has an opportunity for us to really kind of work together, play on our strengths and, and kind of generate a decent level of revenue that would help us grow ourselves here and achieve kind of that overarching goal of being self-sustained. So with all of this said, I would like to present the recommendation that we have here, which is, has, that this plan, uh, NIGA has been reviewed by the Sandina Advisory Board and was approved to bring before city council with the recommendation to enter into a government or advise, sorry, authorize the city manager to enter into an intergovernmental grant with CBX to provide ISP business services to customers in Clackamas County. And the decision that I would like to have council discuss and decide is upon reviewing the proposed IGA and business plan that we respectfully request that council decide if the proposed venture is a feasible and acceptable solution that moves Sandina towards its direction or goal of continuing to grow and make it self-sufficient long-term. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. A great presentation, Greg. Very appreciated. A lot of work obviously went into that with you and your team. So thank you. Any questions for Greg?
I'd just like to say something.
Okay, we'll start with Don.
Thanks. Hey Greg, good job. Thank you. I mean, I know it was kind of hard in your last presentation and this does show a lot of good work, a lot of good thinking and, and in our hallway conversations, it sounded like you got some value out of spending the time on this as well. So I'm, I'm appreciative of that. So well done and thank you.
That's great. Carl.
Real quick. Greg, is there any risk in this at all? Do we need to do some insuring, that sort of thing? Those costs in that kind of area that somebody makes a mistake, break something, this kind of thing. Is there some unreasonable or I wouldn't say reasonable, uh, costs in that area?
Um, yeah, so I did, uh, I did kind of look into a little bit on insurance and increased travel risks, which would happen considering that there is additional travel outside of city limits currently. And upon looking at the risk and seeing what potential additional risk came from traveling or there, it kind of was determined that the additional cost or additional risk was marginal enough that it didn't really have too much of an impact on it from a travel perspective. And now the liability pieces, I could think of a few here, but I won't be able to necessarily tackle all of them. But, uh, you know, you'll always find more liabilities, I'm sure. But there's always risk of obviously personnel injury, but also failing hardware that can cause disruptions, electrocution, harm from lasers. These are all things that we already take on with our fiber optic network that are just, uh, in addition that may translate to a, a business. Improper installation of equipment can, can cause risks. So the ways that we saw about minimizing these risks is making sure that we're following proper code installation that we're wiring and hooking up our equipment correctly so it can't be tripped upon or that everything is grounded and that the power is clean when it comes in so that we reduce the chance of electric, electrical failures as much as possible. Making sure that we're securing fiber and locations and making sure that our, our employees and techs have all the proper safety equipment to reduce as much personal risk to them.
Obviously, you've investigated it. So that and all the rest of it is just great. Good job.
That's great. Thank you, Greg. Kathleen.
So this is a really good start to answering some of the questions that I think I had at the last time. It's not really a business plan for Sandy Net, which I think is something we really desperately need. Cause I think, you know, you guys do such a great job and you're working so hard. But coming up with the kind of the neutral outside third-party analysis of what all the costs are involved in your operations is something that's probably missing here. So, so things that kind of come to mind when I look at this, and I'm not trying to be critical, but I am trying to kind of point out things that I, I think we underestimate how much service we're providing. You know, the, the paying, the, the bill collector, you know, the, the folks that do all the billing, that wasn't included in any of the costs that I could see. Charging for the, um, the vehicles that they're driving out there. You had the gas cost in there, but not the vehicles at all. The cost for the labor was like, you know, thirty-three bucks an hour, which is not at all anywhere near the cost to government, including your, you know, your insurance, your O W C P and all the other costs to government. You know, there's an hourly rate that we pay people, but then there's also a cost to government that is usually about three times what the hourly salary is. And then, and then all this, I, I think that some of the equipment was in there, but I, you know, I don't have a good handle on what other equipment is out there to, to make this happen. But, but those are all kind of costs, and, and well, there's just the facilities too. I mean, you all don't pay any facility rent right now out at the bunk, the annex building, whatever it's called. And so those are all kind of things that, you know, when we do a business plan for the Sandy Net, I, I hope that we can kind of really accurately assess the cost for all that and figure out what we should be charging folks. And I think it's still going to be competitive, again, offer excellent service. That's your, you know, when you talked about marketing, that's your biggest marketing success story. You know, especially if you just pay any attention to Facebook, everybody, including myself, rave about you. I'm curious about what the competitive costs are for, like what is zip, zip fly, uh, charging businesses? What is wave charging businesses? You know, what are, kind of, what's the comparable rates? I kind of looked them up for residential, but it was a little harder to find out what those were for commercials, you know, businesses. You know, I don't think we need to charge as much as the other, the competition, but there shouldn't be any reason why we don't get close. Especially we're evidently splitting this fifty-three, forty-seven or whatever it is with the county. It seems like most of the costs, most, the ongoing costs involved in this, obviously, they have a, a big cost upfront for getting the wire out there. But pretty much the ongoing costs, we're giving forty-three percent of all the revenue that comes in for, you know, years to them. When they don't really, from what I can tell, have hardly any involvement once, once you all do your job. I mean, how, is that? What, what are they doing like, you know, a year from now to a business? Obviously, if the wire gets crunched by something, they're out there to repair it. After you assess that it's not on your side of the line, but is there a reason why they're collecting forty-three percent every month?
Uh, yeah, it's, it's basically to pay off the, the cost it takes to install it and then make an additional revenue too, is that they, they'd be making revenue in addition to us making revenue there. So I, I will say that for, for us to hook up, uh, customers is that we often, uh, when bringing it out to the house, don't make a, don't make profit off that customer until after a couple of years. And I use the term profit as in once all of our expenses are taken care of, uh, operational and capital are paid off, that this is additional revenue that's not going towards an expense essentially. And so the, uh, the same goes with them is that they still have a, a network to pay off after they build it, but also to continue their expansion and, uh, maintenance costs. They have FTEs to, to pay for as well. They have a large network to maintain. And each, each customer that they are able to utilize and utilize that fiber to its fullest allows them to be able to either keep their costs low or continue that, that kind of expansion and work towards their goals there. So when looking at kind of the cost breakdown here and, and you're, you're right, I don't have a cost breakdown on this one for what we do for residential there. But for the first couple of years, all of that, uh, money goes towards paying off the capital construction there. And so that's obviously the huge cost for us is that when we hook a customer up, our break even point is now a couple of years. And while our break even point with the installation cost comes down to three and a half months, theirs is, is probably at least a year, if not more out that before they would start making revenue. So they look at it as an investment on when they're looking to hook up a business and looking to keep them on longer than twelve months. Because they have all the capital burden on that, on, on that end there. So when I look at the split ratio compared to what we look about with fiber network, I would say that they actually come in probably a little bit lower because a, a lot of what we go into and a lot of the repairs that we end up doing and a lot of our unforeseen costs tend to be fiber-related, whether it's infrastructure replacement and repair. And that's all built into their cost and part of their responsibility. So upon review and how I, we've operated our network, I think the amount that's allocated to them and that ratio is perfectly acceptable.
Well, um, what are the costs per purchase? So, so. It just seems like there's a lot of costs that aren't really included in our side of the, the bank. Like I said, you know, the actual employee cost, government cost and the vehicles and the facilities and the, you know, the, the, the over, overhead costs that are, and I get that some of that overhead wasn't included. I appreciate that. You, when you say that it's going to take a half hour to hook everything up and then what we're talking about electrical wires and everything else. I've never had an electrician to my house where they weren't there at least an hour, but.
Oh, I, I mean, we're not electricians either. There's nothing we can deal with, uh, uh, in terms of voltage. It's plugging in a cord to an outlet and then putting two screws in to hang a switch and then plugging the fiber in and waiting for it to boot up and then verifying that it connects up. And then after that, the part of the overhead cost is the network engineer reaching out to the customer's IT department to verify that they were able to cut service over successfully. That's the, go ahead.
Does go to, for me, it goes to what is our mission? And, and I think it's, I appreciate the effort to kind of bring in more money. I guess I'm also concerned about what, you know, what we're, we're looking at using that TARP money or CARES money or whatever it's called to hook up all these places in Sandy, right? A huge job for you considering what you guys are already scrambling with what you've got on board right now. And that's a huge workload. And so then how does this, you know, affect that workload? Because that's really what I think our mission should be is, is focusing on those efforts. How does this affect that?
Um, well, if we're able to maintain our projection of adding one point five customers, it would take the number of hours for the installation technician and the, those in charge of overhead. So it's just a matter of an additional couple of hours that would be to hook up an additional customer. And when you compare it towards things like the level of revenue there is that it, it shows up as yielding more revenue than it would, uh, it would be normally. And so I can kind of put the numbers together here now, but it would be the additional time required would be the costs, the overhead costs and the installation time for the technicians, times one point five a month. And that's how much it would, it should require if we, if we're able to stick to it.
And the clock, the time to add it to our billing system and get them to pay the bill every month and when they're not paying and all that other stuff, that wasn't at all addressed either. But anyway.
Yeah, I mean, uh, we could always go back through and add it into the, into the overhead there. Um, but, uh, from when I did look at it here, uh, and, and researching it, the, uh, ability and the extra cost that adds on to, uh, what we already uh, pay in terms of utility billing to add another customer to that, uh, that record there would be, it'd be sub one dollar. Um, now per month per customer, uh, essentially, we already have you know, thirty-five hundred customers there, an extra customer that follows the same process of, uh, meeting the bill and paying for it, uh, based on, uh, the, the wage that we put into it there. Um, I could, we could come out with a, an exact number for it. I, I don't have it readily available in front of me tonight.
Thanks. I appreciate all the work you've done on this. It's a really great start. I really would like to see us do a master plan for Sandy Net that where are we gonna go in the future? What areas are we gonna try to focus services to and and, and what that kind of cost and how can we, like you, you know, meet the objectives that you lined out in your, in your paper. I appreciate all that effort. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for Edita?
Yeah, you just want to say thank you, Greg.
Yep. Great job.
This is amazing. I really know where you started from, where you've gone into the process of it. And not only did the Sandy Net, uh, board, uh, enthusiastically, um, love it and where you're going with it, and we're excited about it. And I know that you grew a lot during this process and the questions there. And, uh, we'll be able to use this to feed into other projects as well. So I know that you go into that many nights, late into the nights, every night since the last time we saw this. So I just appreciate and recognize the hard work and just the love you have for Sandy Net and making sure that you've also um, gone, um, in trying to find those ways that the council gave direction to being self-sufficient and paying that off. Cause I know that at the root and the heart of it is where it's at. So, um, and just thank you for that.
May, may I just add, um, you know, I think council really challenged, uh, Greg and Sandy Net, you know, the last time he presented. Um, and you know, I, I don't know how I necessarily felt about all of that, but I certainly know how I feel about the outcome, which is I think like good on both. You know, good on the counselors that pushed back and wanted to see a little bit more thoughtfulness and thoroughness and what we're doing with Sandy Net and how we're thinking about it. But good on, uh, Greg and, and Sandy Net and, and your team for taking that challenge on in that manner in which you did and really jumping, you know, deep into it in the professional manner, the way you've conducted yourself, presented it tonight. I think it just speaks volumes about you and your department. Um, so I, I think this is really just ended up in a really good spot for all of us. That's something I need to be concerned with. Okay. Uh, with that, if, if there's not more, if there's more discussion, great. If not, we can also entertain a, a motion.
I'll make a motion that's, that the, uh, that we authorized the city manager to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with CBX to provide ISP business service to customers in Clackamas County.
A second. There's a motion by councillor Hockinson and a second by councillor Smallwood. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose nates? Motion carries. All right, moving on. Thank you again, Greg. Really appreciate it. Um, moving forward into new business, we have our planning, uh, commission appointments. I'm thinking Jeff, are you providing the staff report on that?
It's Kelly.
Oh, it's Kelly. Great. Hello, Kelly.
Is that an Oregon shirt?
He's still, he's
Oh yeah, it is.
You know, I'm a U of U alumni, right?
Now, Kelly, D, can you start with an update on our coaching search? Have I missed anything during the meeting?
Um, I know Cristobal's out. I don't know anything beyond that.
All right. Well, you can get on with the report then.
Yeah, I hope that somebody will stay around more than a couple of years. Um, so tonight before you is a recommendation from the interview panel, which consisted of three council members, uh, Mayor Polian, councillor Walker and council Sheldon. And also planning commissioner Maiton, they sat on a interview panel together on November twenty-third, interviewed seven potential candidates, four of which were current members on the commission and three of which were three people that were interested in serving on planning commission. They came away from that with recommendations for the four seats being, um, to reappoint Mr. Crosby to seat one. To reappoint McLean Wenzel to seat seven and to appoint Darren Wegener to seat two and Breezy Polian to seat three. So that's the main thing, um, for your decision process tonight. Is, um, to make a motion to select those four individuals or to have a discussion about, um, the other three that also interviewed for appointment or reappointment. The second item that we wanted you to look at tonight was the term structure options. So option one um, would be a modification to the current two cohort system. So we just want to present that as one potential option. This would move it to three cohorts. Two of the positions would expire in two years and they would have to seek reappointment at that time. The other two would expire in four years and that way we would have three years, um, of staggered appointments instead of the two. The section, the second option, which is on page two of the staff report is to just stay with the existing structure. Um, and that would mean that the four appointments would all expire at the same time in two thousand twenty-five. So that's, that's really the two things that staff is seeking, um, is, is appointment of four commissioners and then also to just discuss the term options and make a decision on whether you want to go with option one, option two, or even another option if council wants to look at something else. So I'll stop there and turn it back to you, Mayor.
Kelly, um, well, we'll go into the discussion. I'll, I'll just start as someone who is on the panel, uh, for the interviews. Uh, I know what my personal kind of goals going in, there's interviews were, and I think was shared kind of by the group as we went through the discussion. Uh, of course, everyone can speak up if it's not. But really my goals were to try to infuse some new blood onto our planning commission. Uh, we have a lot of counselors and I should start with just thank you to everybody who's both served on our commission and has applied to serve on our commission and service to our community means a lot. Uh, but we have some commissioners that've spent a lot of years. We're talking like decades years on our planning commission. Thank you again for that. But sometimes we need new blood and new opportunity for different committee members to get involved in our community. I think it also helps as council has seen a lot of new blood over the last couple of years. And I think it's done a lot of good for the way we tackle things. The second thing I wanted was experience. We also need to keep on to experience. We did do that. That's a panel by keeping both the chair or the current chair, uh, the most senior member on the commission as well as, uh, Commissioner Wetzel. Um, and then, um, some diversity and equity as well. Uh, you know, uh, this is a commission that was pretty male um, heavy and dominant, um, for a lot of years. We were able to get, uh, Commissioner Jan Lee on there, uh, this last time. Uh, but I think even in our conversations as a, uh, council, it helps out a lot to have a lot of different diversity of opinion and viewpoints, whether it be age or gender or whatever else it may be. Uh, so those were kind of my three. I think we did a good job. We have four appointments. Uh, we get another, um, a female member of our community, uh, onto the commission. Uh, we retain, um, with two current members on there, um, and we get some new blood. So I think we kind of hit those three buckets uh, that we are going for. And, and I, I really, obviously I like our recommendations. That was one of the three. So that's kind of what I have to say about it.
Oh, yeah. I, I just, I want to start out by saying thank you to the ones that are being replaced. But like you said, that's a long time of service. And I think it should not go without being recognized and greatly appreciated. Um, on the flip side of that, I, I agree. I think that, um, that there's a chance for some change and, and opportunity and, and fresh mindset. And so I'm excited about that. Um, are we gonna discuss the term limits separately?
Oh yeah, I was gonna, I was just wanting to handle this.
Rich said, they, the folks that have been on there have done a fantastic job. It's really hard work. Many, many hours over the years, reading four hundred to eight hundred page reports. So I really honor, honor their service.
Yeah, okay. I guess I really am pleased that the, the mixes of things. I know that there was, uh, a, a lot of concern about just how that, um, the existing older um, members were gonna be released versus the, some of the newer members. So like, uh, I, in my mind, I don't mind having, um, old members taken off as long as there's the continuum of older members, people especially who've been there. You know, like Jerry Crosby's, but I don't know how long he's been there. He's been twenty, well before uh, Jeremy and I were on there, I think. So there is a staleness that happens when you get that many years on it. Uh, the, the biggest concern I had, uh, when I looked at the way we were recommending it. I want to be really careful here because it is, uh, the responsibility, I think, of every member to be involved in community service in some way. So, thank you and kudos to the folks who applied. I just wanted to make sure that there was a thought given to, uh, some of the, maybe the inexperience of some of the members we did bring on that are new. And, uh, I know that there's a balance in there with older, but I, I was also thinking about some of the, uh, we have a couple of individuals, I'm not picking on them. I, I want to say I appreciate their volunteer, but they are working outside of the city, um, will have a lot of experience in terms of some of the decisions that are being made here. So uh, the new eyes is a good idea, but I also wonder if there isn't some issue around, uh, getting ready, getting, uh, understanding, putting some of these just, um, very difficult anymore, diff- very difficult. And leading to, in some cases, court decisions, that we have some of that experience in there. Uh, did you guys work your way through some of that thought process?
So I guess I can only speak to like, I'll speak to the two kind of new, new members, who would be new members to the commission and the group. Cause the others have the commission experience. You know, one is I would say, um, uh, the female man, I'm not great with names. The female member of the two. Um, you know, she was involved in the Sandy Community Action Centers, different nonprofit organizations in town for volunteerism. Uh, also I believe as a mother of, what was that, six and a six? Um, and my, my mom was only a mother to three and I could tell you the skill set and stuff that you get from having that to balance all of the stuff that happens with that. And so with that individual, both through life experience as well as experienced volunteering in the community, I feel, I personally feel satisfied. The other member was, is somebody that I am actually very proud to promote, uh, to commission as well. And the reason for that is the individual had applied for the, uh, a planning commission position, uh, previously. Was highly, I was on that panel as well. I think you worked, I maybe, uh, was highly, uh, considered for the position at that time. But what I really appreciated about this individual was is that not only did they apply a second time, as we all know, a lot of times they just go away forever. But this individual also, if you go and I, and I suspect if you go right now to your, uh, to who's watching the city council meeting. Uh, you'll see that name and you see his name at every council meeting between the last time there was the application of this time. I suspect the planning commission sees it. And so just, you know, I gave kind of a deep-throated answer to that, but we definitely did, you know, and even the new members, I think definitely shown an ability with both past experience, life experience, as well as certain willingness to get involved in the community to do that.
I appreciate that. And I think that's really, it makes a lot of my concerns less. In the last few years, I've seen more times where the planning commission decisions have made it to the desks of the city council. Uh, some of those have been, I think, really reasonable and, and the right thing to do. And some of those have been one of those that you just wonder, you know, how, how do we get to this point without some of the work that could have happened in the trenches. So I appreciate the difficulty. A lot of things I, having spent several years, I think four or five years on planning commission, it, it sometimes can be really a drudge. I mentioned several hundred pages sometimes. I remember getting uh, the preparation documents for it delivered to me in a dolly in my office. It was really heavy. There was lots of jokes about back injuries and such at that time. So I, I would say thank you again for all those folks who put their name in it. And I thank you for those who are leaving. Think about the things that are happening in that. Take your job seriously. Appreciate it.
And I would get just respond like standard, the three of the seven are returning, you know, have been on the planning commission for, for, for years. Um, one of them, then in addition, you know, of the other two, one of them was a city councillor. And the other one was a, on the planning commission, I think in Trump day or somewhere. And so then that leaves, you know, the, the last two that don't have as much experience in actual planning commission, but five of the seven have years of experience. So I feel like we've got that necessary kind of corporate knowledge or that, you know, land bank that we need for, for covering things and keeping us well represented.
I just want to say thank you for those that will be coming off the, the, um, I know it's a service that is a thankful, well thankless job. I thank you. And I know we all thank you and other planning commissioners have gone through it. We'll thank you because it's thankless. Um, it's one that has done it in the past and, and due to city council, which I think is great. A lot of times, but, um, so thank you so much for that time and your energy and and putting in, as we said, you know, over a decade, um, for each individual, that, um, is a, is a huge commitment. So, um, I do look forward, uh, I was on the interview committee the past time with one that you were describing. And I remember once you described who that, who that was, who that was before. So I'm excited to, to see them, uh, come on board, uh, with that, cause it brings maybe some perspectives, um, uh, that we haven't seen yet for that. But just thank you so much. And, and you know, I'd love to see some type of, uh, a plaque or something, something that we can do to give out because that, it, you know.
That is in process.
Okay, I just, that, that's, uh, good. That's needed. So.
Yeah, I think there's a comment. Did you have some first? I was wondering procedurally, do we need to tie the motion to the options? I don't think we have to, but let's go through the options. Might as well do it. Uh, so we have two options in front of us. Uh, some of you may remember the conversation we had last time, kind of the onboard four, the four terms. Uh, all in the same kind of term or to stagger them a little bit. Um, what were you guys thinking of the two options that were presented in the staff report?
I want to know what Rich thinks.
I know, well, that's where I was going too.
I'm gonna go back to where I was originally. Um, I still think that we need to, uh, this is a great example of the staggering, right? This time we were able to keep, um, some, some historical knowledge on that, right? Um, this allows us to maintain that into the future, even for some reason we had to vacate all the spots. Whether that be by their own choice or, or choosing and changing. I just think this is a, uh, this is a better plan as I stated before. Um, Kelly, correct me if I'm wrong. I believe after, I don't know if it's in here, but I believe if, in after this, it goes back to the, is it four-year appointments, right? It just has two every four years.
When you said, when you say this, is it option one or two?
One, I'm sorry, option one. Yeah.
I mean, that's what staff envisioned at least is that if you were to choose option one, let me just look at it here. Um, that, for example, the, the two seats that would expire at the end of twenty twenty-three, if you reappointed those two individuals or new people to those seats, then they would be for four years at that point.
So this is a two, two, three, right?
Correct. That is correct.
Is there any rationale for making the two newest members have to reapply?
You could easily change it.
Yeah, there wa- there wasn't a great deal of thought. If, if the council would rather change that, that's, the council's prerogative.
Yeah, I think probably since he just got on. Yeah, let's maybe not. Let's like give him a little breathing room. As the, the one guy up here who has to run every two years. So maybe give him a little breathing room.
We appreciate you. You know, as I said here, and, and just some, just before that, some, it's this mountain we're fighting over, but um, this leaves, by doing that, this gives them a chance to just have kind of a sample taste, right, for a couple of years. And then they can make a decision whether they want to do a longer term thing. Just something to think about. Where you're leaving your, again, your, your longevity on there for the full four-year term. So just I'm, I'm not sold either way. I, I see value in either side. I just want to point that out.
Because other people have that expectation of the term ending when it already does it too. So you'd be kind of surprising them with a shorter term.
I think so.
Yeah, I, I think of a person goes through the effort and, and work and so on to be able to apply and for the first time beyond there. I would imagine, I wanted to be on there enough to be on that.
Yes, let's.
So, yep, if you do that, uh, the other thing that, um, I don't see it working up here is, uh, when Jeremy and I were in there, there was a when Jeremy and I were in there, there was a advisor, I guess we called it, in the backseat someplace in case somebody had a chance to um, be sick or uh, couldn't make it further and they were watching.
You mean like an alternate?
It wasn't an alternate, it was an advisory coun- uh, council member, which we had about two, some of them three that went. If there was an opening, they would be learning and we we referred to them and asked them, do you have any comments on this? But
I was on the panel that we just like, we decided to get rid of it, but Kelly, why didn't we decide to get rid of it? I don't remember.
I I think it's actually still in the code. We've actually asked people in the past, like last year, whether they'd want to serve on a as an advisor and people pretty much said no. Um, however, that being said, I know one of the first tasks that um planning commission is going to be looking at in January is their bylaws and hoping to draft some bylaws that they can then forward to city council. And I think they were wanting to look at the advisor position in more detail and try to come up with ways to modify it slightly. So maybe it'd incentivize more people to want to actually be an advisor.
Well, Kelly, I apologize for interrupting. We'll have to double check that. I actually think that was taken out uh, in twenty eighteen. Uh, but we'll need to check into that further, I think.
Okay, one thing it did do was it gave somebody a chance to sit in the take chair. In those days, there weren't virtual cars.
You can get experience.
And get experience and understand. It was a tough one because then everybody had a chance to vote. So let's have their.
Can you imagine?
One minute to say something, what your thoughts are and that was it. So that was why we, it was very rarely filled or people left it great.
Other than that, I I like the idea of flipping, giving the people a little bit longer.
I was on shadow count, so at least we got credit for it.
But you guys, that was pretty much the get, yeah.
All right, are we ready for a motion? Um, can somebody tell me what the new terms are? Can you walk them through that, Jeff?
I don't know what flip meant. So it's, it sounds like, uh, if you look at the staff report under option one, that the proposal here is to make the term expiration dates for Jerry Crosby and Hollis McLean Wenzel, uh, twelve thirty-one, twenty-three. And then to make Darren Wagner and Breezy Pullin, uh, twelve thirty-one, twenty-five. As I understand it.
Correct. So I'll make a motion that we do what Jeff said. In addition to recommending that we appoint Jerry Crosby to C one, Darren Wagner to C two, Breezy Pullin to C three and Hollis McLean Wenzel to C seven on the planning commission and adopt the terms as were stated previously. Second, there's a motion by councillor Hockenson and a second by councillor uh, Smallwood, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed names, motion carries. All right, we did it. Cool. Uh, moving forward under new business, um, comp plan consultant approval. Gordon?
Yeah, and Kelly's going to present this. Um, this is a a council goal um, to uh, update our comprehensive plan. This is the 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 big project approval uh, to get us uh, started and working on this, which is going to take almost, I think, two years. Um, we've talked about how big of an effort a comprehensive plan update is. So um, this is your first action. He's approving the 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 contract um, to get us going, but um, Kelly Neal will be managing the project and um, he'll get the staff report for this proposal.
Yeah, so before you tonight is a brief staff report with a scope of work, which is attachment A and a cost estimate of just over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which is attachment B. And so the process was is that we put out um, an RFQ. We got three firms, three competent firms that all submitted good proposals, Three J Consulting, Angela Plan Group and Mig. Um, those three proposals were scored by staff, councillor Smallwood and Commissioner McLean Wenzel. While all three were very good proposals, the clear winner was Three J Consulting. And um, so we told them in August that they were the clear winner and then we entered into negotiations with them. They're also using subcontractors Eco Northwest, Geo's Institute and Veritas Collaborations. Um, so the next steps, if you were to approve the contract or approved um, the city manager to enter into a contract tonight with Three J Consulting would be that we would be working on a preliminary list of key stakeholder groups with the consultant Three J. We'd be discussing public engagement tools, which would mainly probably be for the majority through Sandy Speaks. The new engagement platform that we just launched a couple of weeks ago and then other project strategies. So the consultant typically on a big project like this, similar to a parks master plan or uh, a transportation system master plan or any other large planning effort goes through data collection and analysis of existing conditions. They usually do SWOT analysis with, which is identifying your strengths and weaknesses. And then from there, you kind of get into the meat or the more fun public engagement pieces where you actually start um, designated and designing kind of the comprehensive plan and what the city is going to look like in twenty years from now. So that's kind of the big, that's kind of the big takeaways and the next steps. Um, as you'll see, I I wrote a pretty robust budgetary impact section. Um, that's included with the staff report as well. And just to let everybody know, attachment C is a fifty thousand dollar DLC DT TA grant we just got a few weeks ago. Um, so just to remind everybody, the city of Sandy planning staff applied for two grants. We got denied on one of them, which we we didn't think we had much of a chance of getting, but we applied anyways. And then on the second one, we got fifty thousand dollars. So that helps with budgetary reasons or purposes. Um, so the the consultant is on the line tonight just listening and they are here if you have any technical questions. Both in regards to the scope of work or the budgetary memo attachment, just because they would be the best person to answer kind of the more technical questions on those. Uh, but with that, we're recommending that you approve the scope of work and budget and that you assign the city manager to enter in a contract with Three J Consulting.
Having been uh, part of this process, um, Three J was uh, when Kelly said that they really stood out, they really stood out. Like they took the time to actually come out to Sandy. You could tell based on the, on that information that they gave. They understood the diversity. They understood the nature of the work. Um, they went as far as like incorporating pieces of town in their, in their presentation and and whatnot. So they they definitely, I mean, were a standout of of the ones that submitted and I think we'll do a great job, so.
Uh, economic development plan is really heavily integrated into this as well, I see.
Yes, the analyst, so there's still uh, economic development plan coming on besides that, the the analyst.
Yeah, the analysis.
Sorry, I couldn't say that. My mask was getting in the way. Um, and then uh, thank you for laughing. Um, but and then we have a uh, the market analysis, which is is two separate things, but with that being that done, putting it in place with this so that it can be used for that and then turned in will help solidify that even more. So good hand in hand type of thing that we're coming from another third party. Perfect.
I I did a very imperfect and uh, review of some of the work that Three J's done. I couldn't find anything wrong, so kudos to the selection. Thanks for doing that. I do have a question for the company. Said they're on the virtual meeting of, in any kind of thing like this, you got a couple of years worth of work to do. Other projects that are on their table sometimes get in the way and I I don't want to know all the details of it, but what format do you guys use? I'm talking to the contractor now. Uh, for being, make sure that our process stays on track, doesn't get lost in the business of having to deal with other cities or other projects. Again, which workload, I guess, analysis in a short statement. For the next couple of years while you're working on the city of Sandys.
Good evening, uh, mayor and councillors. My name is Steve Faust. I'm the community planning director with Three J Consulting. Uh, there was a little interruption while we joined the meeting as a panelist, but I think what I heard you say or ask uh, councillor is um, how the rest of our workload uh, looks over the next few years and how this fits into that. To make sure we have the capacity to to work on this project, is that correct?
Yes, and one little um, addition to it is is how do you determine your workload? So if you, there's bound to be times when everything is going to come due at the same time for whatever reasons, that how do you, do you structure yourself so that you don't have to end up with putting us in the second seat and allowing time to slide by?
Certainly, certainly. Well, as a, as a firm, we are constantly projecting our workloads. Uh, every month we project workloads um, up to a year ahead. So uh, we're constantly making sure that the hours needed for a project, uh, we have that capacity for our team. Uh, my colleague, Annie S. Mate, who's uh, with me tonight, is going to be the main point of contact. Uh, she just uh, wrapped up, uh, is wrapping up a comprehensive plan update for the city of Sherwood. Uh, not too long ago, another one for the city of Redmond. So that uh, has freed up the time and her per schedule and her workload uh, to be the main point of contact for this project. I'll say we have, we we put together a team specifically uh, for what the city of Sandy and the RFQ was asking for. So we do have a a bench of uh, other consultants who are going to help with this project. Uh, so I'm quite confident that we have the capacity over the next two years to uh, to fulfill our commitment to the city.
Thank you.
Hi Steve, thank you very much. I appreciate it. We look forward to working with you. Kelly, I had a question for you about the grant that we got. And um, can you see that, uh, can you send me a copy of the grant application? Um, the one thing that I had concerns about, you know, when we take money from the outside, there's sometimes strings attached. And uh, the grant folks at the um state of Oregon, LCDC said that, you know, they uh, uh, pleased to offer us this grant. Our proposal aligns well with the priorities established in the LCDC's grants allocation plan and other approval criteria. That makes me really dip, kind of nervous because I'm not, I'm pretty sure I don't agree with about half of their priorities at LCDC. So if we're taking fifty thousand dollars from them, I'm, I'm worried. Um, if there's, you know, just what did we promise them and uh, yeah. So um, I'd like a copy of the grant to be sent out to the city council if you could, just to make sure that we're all understanding what their expectation is and whether or not, you know, hopefully there's not too many strings attached to it, but if they are, I I want to kind of know, know that going in.
Yeah, I'd be, I'd be happy to do that. What I can tell you is I've worked with um, Gordon Howard, who's the community services divi- division manager. Uh, actually, I worked with them very closely on our buildable lands inventory in two thousand fifteen and then in two thousand seventeen on our UGB expansion because of that time. He was actually in a different position at DLCD. He was in a lower position and um, so he, he helped me and the regional representative at the time, Jennifer Donnelly, quite a bit. And I mean, I thought he was actually excellent to work with and very flexible. So um, I am pretty confident that he'll be pretty easy to work with and that I think that they will award us the grant money with very little, if any, strings attached. Um, but I I can certainly send you what we sent them.
Thank you.
I have that same pet peeve with grants. Yeah, all the boards I serve on are that guy. So I definitely understand. Um, all right, and if there's no other discussion, it's our motion for adoption.
I move that we direct the city manager to enter in a contract with Three J Consulting to update the city's comp plan as recommended in the staff report.
Second.
Some motion by uh, councillor Exter and a second by councillor Walker to uh, to move forward. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed names, motion carries. Um, just on a personal note, this is a big deal. Uh, I'm just, that's very, very happy to see us moving forward with our comp plan. It's something that I know has been talked about a lot in this community with how quickly we're growing and it's a big accomplishment. So thank you for your work on the grants, Kelly, moving us forward in this direction. Appreciate it.
I had one little um, comment. The list of attachments in our staff report, I don't know if anybody had trouble pulling them. I couldn't. And so I I'd ask that Jeff send, send us out the actual, I I I asked for it and got it. Um, but it would be really important, I think, for all of us to be, get familiar with this comp plan scope work, the budget and the word letter. I just kind of gave you the.
Anyway, click on it, ask, you don't have permission to get.
Yeah, it's that compass thing or something like that.
Yeah, I appreciate the feedback. We'll make sure that doesn't happen. What what it was supposed to be was uh, one of those internal links that just jumps you to another part of the PDF, didn't work correctly. So we'll make sure that doesn't happen.
But it is going to be.
There in the packet. All that info is in the packet. It's just the the quick links didn't work.
All right, moving forward, uh, that's a great one. Police. Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you.
Uh, police body and uh, worn cameras update and purchase authorization.
Hey Chief. Hey, Roberts is here tonight. I'll let, I don't want to, uh, I'll let him do most of the talking. We don't get to see him very often, so. But uh, yeah, please said, um, he's here tonight to give you an update on the the police body cameras uh, project. Uh, council recalls funding in the last budget cycle. So he's going to provide an update on that and a request uh, the council authorized uh, the purchase for body worn cameras.
Yeah, thank you, Tyler, or Jordan. Appreciate it. Um, good evening, everyone. Uh, an update for you on this. Um, if all of you remember, they were uh, in on this uh, project from the beginning, I provided a quote for the budget committee um, for a seventy one thousand dollars for this project at the time. It was for all the um, cameras and the equipment. And before that quote, before I'd got that quote, I'd worked with IT and uh, our IT department and it was thought that we could do this project on our own premises with our own server storage uh, capabilities that we have currently. After uh, having several more meetings with the provider and IT, we found out that just wasn't possible. Now without increasing our um, either purchasing more servers and that cost was more than what we could do um with uh, having this uh, all on the cloud storage. The cloud storage, of course, comes with cost, but it's uh, C just um, that meets all the C just standards, which is the criminal justice information systems. We have to be compliant with all their standards. It meets that, they manage it. And uh, it will also, with a new software update, it will also also be able to integrate our in-car camera systems of the seven that we have that are the older systems. With a software update, we can bring those on the new system as well and without having to purchase new cameras for those cars we already have in there. The actual cost for the in-car video systems is a lot more than say a body camera cost, just for the equipment. It's just a lot more. And the installation is also more with those in the cars. So that helps bringing those systems along and saves us from buying more cameras for the vehicles. And this project does include seven more of those in-car systems new for our remaining fleet that doesn't have these systems in there. So basically, we have about half of our patrol fleet right now, as you probably already knew, that has these in-car video systems and half that doesn't. So we needed to bring that in and that was just, that was a project some years ago. And a goal for us to outfit the rest of those, so that would take care of this as well. Um, I also want to apologize for the the staff report. Uh, there's a I was working on a timeline with Motorola Solutions for this to give all of you and they gave me the timeline right after the staff report was published. So I couldn't put it in there after the fact, but I do have that uh, from them. And um, it's basically in a nutshell about four months from the time I make the, if we make this purchase order. It'd be about four months be, for everything to be installed, the equipment, everything to be here. And within that time, you know, we'll work out the policy updates and things like that. And the training as well, this includes the training, they'll come out and train all their people on this equipment. And so sometime early spring, I would think that we would have a, like a, a pilot, a project with a few out in the field at first to test it. And then by summer, I think we could be all up and running on the whole project. So I apologize that I didn't get in there, but those people got that to me just like on Thursday. So I wasn't able to put that in the report.
I'm surprised with four months. I was, I was thinking you were going to say twelve months because being in the business myself of not the police business, but the tech business, I'm waiting for things for a year, nine months uh, before we have a date to ship. So that's good. I really appreciate uh, moving to the cloud uh, for a lot of reasons. It brings the technical debt of in-house uh, train as well as the long-term support of it. Um, and that's where we should be going. Uh, so I appreciate that change and moving forward with it. And um, I'm surprised I'm not surprised that the cost has gone up since the original because, well. Because well, everything is done up. I mean, I just, we can see here all night later and I can tell you about all the things in tech that I'm dealing with that across the board is going. So actually, I wouldn't have been surprised if it was even more so, but I appreciate it.
The, the equipment itself, if I may, just really quickly, really wasn't, there was no large increase in equipment. Most of this cost, as you can, it's in the storage of the cloud storage and the ongoing cost of that. So yeah, the equipment itself, it went up a bit, but not, not significantly. It was just the change in having to go to the cloud instead of being able to manage this on our own servers. And I think also it will reduce time for our IT department. We have Scott Jones who works with us at the police department, then he's, we keep him very busy with that. So this won't be something that he'll have to manage. Correct. And included in this is the redaction software for our evidence technician. That's crucial. Right now, our evidence technician with the old system manually redacts, you know, just manually has to redact everything from our video from our cars, which is time consuming. With the redaction software, it's much quicker and easier. It will require, this also will require someone to, there's going to be more evidence technician time involved. And right now, our records manager is our evidence technician. We do have a spot that's still open in our police department that will, will have somebody move from our records department. One of our records technicians, we've already started this process, will halftime will be spent eventually as an evidence technician. So it, it also provides them an opportunity which they're excited about to do something a little bit different and to get trained in another field, so to speak. And we've started a vetting process for that already too, which is a plus for our department.
Yeah, Kathleen. So thanks, Ernie. This is a great update. The confusion I have is that the five-year cost for the camera equipment and storage is one hundred and seventeen thousand eight hundred and three. And so are we paying, I mean, I, you know, we had allocated seventy one thousand, I guess, for our two-year biennium budget. And so are we paying all that hundred and seventeen in this biennium and then getting it free for the next three years after that? Or that's, that's my concern is, you know, companies where we fill the hole of the other forty thousand plus dollars. And, and, and what kind, you know, usually you don't pay for services five years ahead of time.
Yeah, that's a good question, councillor Walker. Thank you for reminding me and I wanted to get to that too. So obviously, when I, when we figured this out, this cost and figured out how much this was going to be, I knew we didn't have that, those amount of funds that were budgeted to us from the budget committee. I, I had a meeting with city manager Wheeler and deputy city manager Deans and we were, gave them an update. And this is something that we, we will pay upfront, so the whole cost. And that will cover everything for that five near years. Now, after, after the five-year period is done, then we'll have to renew this contract. Obviously, we won't need the equipment and things like that, but there will be an ongoing cost after that. And most of that will be storage. So some good news, we, we can absorb this in the police budget now. So we're not, I'm not seeking additional funding from council. That, the reason we're able to do that is we're, we're budgeted in our salary line item for full staff, which we're not right now. We're still in the process of hiring. So we still got, we're still two people short. And so we haven't been using that. And so after that meeting, we, we, we discovered we could, we could absorb this in our budget. It won't take anymore and we'll just pay the entire amount upfront. And then that'll, that'll take us through the whole five-year period. And also during that five-year period with this contract, there's going to be a new body camera out. And I think they said two and a half years, there's going to be a new model with new software. They will come out, exchange those, upgrade the software. It's all included in this, so there's not any, if something goes wrong with it, it's, they'll take care of it with this. We won't have to ship a camera in, get a new one. They'll just come out and replace these things if we need to do that.
Carl. A little bit of background, I'd love to get into the cruisers and have a chance to do a little right along in that. But I have to confess, it's been about six, seven months since I've done one of those. And the last time I did that, the in-car cameras didn't evaluate or didn't read the license plate numbers that the officers were reading. And they were typing in the license plate numbers as they were driving along, checking out cars and such. Is, is this improvement in the camera in the vehicles, in the cruisers, take care of that or are we still?
These are body cams.
To answer your question, they, they don't read the license plate. Now, there, there is technology to do that, to have those on. I believe councillor Sheldon is probably really familiar with that technology. I think some of the their vehicles have that technology. It's a completely different system. That's a license plate reader.
Right.
Takes that information and puts it, inputs it into the, the CAD program automatically. But this does not do that. It's just, it's just strictly a video and audio.
For the actions to the windshield, I take it. Do you see those on YouTube?
Well, yeah. Multiple cameras in the cars, you know, facing out. And there's also that one that faces back to, from the backseat when you have someone in the back and also recording the wall.
Okay, thank you. I guess I would encourage you to look that direction because there's so many things going on in a, in that vehicle at any one time. And you're sitting there, you're listening to the radio, you're watching the cars, you're checking out. And the officer has always got just his full attention on all kinds of things to add to it, typing in the license plate number. And that computer is, seemed like an awful lot to add on to. It'd be a great advantage, I would think, to not have to deal with that. Seems like that would be it. I don't, if it's a really expensive system to have those cameras added to the vehicle.
Right now, the technology, it may get cheaper over time, of course, you, these things do. But right now, it's to, to outfit a vehicle for all those real experts.
I don't get it though. You know, Facebook can read my face. You know, but we can't, we can't read the license plate.
I'm sure in the future, it's something we could look into. But you know, my, my folks are, are really excited about this project. They want the cameras.
Yeah.
They really do. Most agencies in Clackamas County are going to this. They have projects already ongoing or somewhere in the testing phase already, somewhere completed. So my, my, my officers are excited about it. And I think our community, you know, they, this is something that's important to them.
Yeah, right. Absolutely. So.
All right. So our motion.
I move to authorize purchase of body cams, body worn cameras, vehicle cameras, five-year agreement for associated services and cloud-based storage.
There are a second.
I'll second that.
Motion by councillor Exner and a second by councillor Pete Sold. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed names, motion carries. This is another big goal of councils and past councils, so congratulations, everyone. Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it.
Remember when you got the first seven cameras and talking about that, you were over at the library still. The uploading of the files when we came up there, you know, it was a big deal back then.
Yeah.
Tell your guys not to forget, remind the hose draggers that they're, they're filming, so we don't say anything dumb.
I love that.
Like your folks would ever do that.
Jordan, spotlight's on you, buddy.
All right. Thanks, Mary Council. Brief reports tonight, we extended recruitment for a standing that utility worker. You know, I only, I bring these up just to keep you informed of our recruitment. You know, we got this recruitment for the standing that utility worker. We also have police recruitments underway, which they're in the interview process of background checks on a couple. So we're continuing to move forward with those, but you know, labor shortages and also sort of the employment economy right now are affecting us. We extended the application period for the utility workers. We did not get any applicants. And so our search continues for filling positions. On that, the public works director, I don't have a detailed update for you, other than we're continuing to, to work on this and work with at least one candidate who was part of the pool. And then I'm also exploring some other options in terms of interim. So stay tuned. We're consuming a lot of my time right now and figuring out how to, how to fill that crucial position and other positions in that department. Some bit of good news, I want to congratulate Tyler for the popular annual financial reporting award from the GFPA for the report that he put together for our last fiscal year nineteen and twenty.
He's still doing an award show for that, pre-show and all that. Congratulations.
I think that one of the, the, the things I like to highlight about this reward in particular is, unlike the budget and the cap, we actually don't have to do a popular annual financial report. But Tyler chooses to do so, not just to get awards, but also. But to, you know, it's, it's one of the, the things that GFPA has as a best practice to help the public understand more about how city finances are. So just kudos to Tyler for, for taking that on, on his own and, and putting together that report and getting the award for it. One of the things I did want to bring to your attention, and I will share this if you haven't seen it, is some legislative concepts that Congressman Lumenour and Senator Wyden has been working on in terms of the Mount Hood National Forest. You know, I just received this today. You may have received it as key stakeholders in the area. You know, they sent it to us because, you know, Sandy is the gateway to Mount Hood. It's too early to say if any of these will directly impact Sandy. I think the, the big indirect impacts are traffic, tourism, things that they're proposing up there in terms of designating more wilderness areas, wild and scenic or recreational river, portions of the Sandy River, which we have an interest in, obviously, with where those boundaries are in regards to our proposal for the Sandy River discharge. But I also shared it with PAC West if they had any input on that as well, in addition to our wastewater team. But I'll, I'll start with you. We can have a further discussion about it if there's any input that we want to provide or the council wants to provide as the governing body back to the representative and senators that are working on this. These are just concepts. There's a map they included too, that kind of has all the different designations of what they propose for trails and, and all that. But we haven't seen any proposed legislative, you know, language. It's just the concepts at this point.
It's Congressman Lumenour and Senator White.
White, yeah. Yeah. And then just finally, a reminder that no council meeting on December twentieth. So thank you for the mayor clearing the, the agenda for that to have a little break for Christmas.
Got some sweat.
But the trade-off is that we will have a work session next Monday. The planning commission has been invited to that meeting. It's about the bypass feasibility study and then the TSP priorities to
Give and take.
Yeah, sorry. But that's it for me. Thank you.
Please drop that. Nice, Don.
Well, we'll be out of town next month, so I'll just start my report with that and I'll be traveling, so unfortunately unable to attend. I could make the twentieth, you know, just. I just want to say thanks. The Christmas lighting was fun. A lot of people, I think it was, I think what we're seeing is people wanting to get out and about again and giving them opportunity to do so, especially in a, in a safe and way is, is really smart. So say thanks for that. As we look forward to doing that again in the future and say, let's get the choir mic, if we have a choir or whoever's performing, let's make sure we've got enough mics to, to make it, to make it sound professional enough for a city that's grown as fast as ours and as big as ours. But DJ was definitely loud and you could hear him and Mary, we could hear you.
You see me dance into it?
I tried not to look.
There's some good moves. Some good moves out there.
That's good. I also want to say thanks. I love the town with, this time of year with the lights on the trees and everything. It looks really good. It's, but I, I want us to continue to remember the impact light has on the mood and what you think of a town, right? Something as simple as putting a few dollar lights on a tree makes, makes you think there's something special there. Like, okay, there, there's shops or restaurants or places that I want to go. And I think we need to think about that light strategy, not just streetlights, but while, as we look to, to build that, that future vision of what we want that downtown quarter to look like. The PETF, the, the pool task force, they're working on the recommendation that should be reported to the council in January. I'd like to thank Jeff for fixing my chair. Enough, it doesn't sink. That's, that's, I appreciate that. And lastly, it was a cheer of humility. Anyway, and the last one, we've got some new engagement software. I'd love to have maybe a demo. If we have one of those light days, one of them coming up that you can tell us how it works and what we can expect from it. So thanks.
Thank you, Carl. Yeah, a couple, three things here. I have been on the TSV committee for the last two times that it's been in progress. And I just want to say that, Kelly, if you're still listening, what a great job that is. They're really in some detail and you're going to see a lot of the detail of that on Monday. I think that's where we're planning on having it displayed to the council, really an excellent well, depth that in the inventory of the whole process around Sandy and I appreciate that. So I'm looking forward to having the council see that thing. I had a chance to talk with Rochelle, the new Parks and Recreation Director, a sharp, sharp individual. Really pleased with a lot of her understanding and skills and the things that she is certainly aware of, how to do her or a business in her, her work job. So I'm sure she has a lot of ideas that she'll be sharing with us as we go along. A really good pat on the back, Public Works, they fixed a, really, I thought a pretty substantial problem. And I hate to say it was in front of my house, but it was also on Langins. And so there's a lot of truck traffic that we seem to still continue to get there. I see trucks, I have no idea where they're going to or coming, or coming from the highway, obviously. But what they plan to do when they go down Langins, they're talking about semi-trucks, you know, cattle trucks. It just seems like there's, we ought to be thinking about what we're doing on some of these roads that aren't designed to have the heavy traffic on.
They turn right and go down to Barco, I've seen.
Is that where they're going to?
Yeah, they go to two eleven.
What, I'm trying to miss the downtown traffic or something, I suppose. Anyway. Appreciate, yeah, that could be that too. Appreciate the public work. Did a great job, by the way. I kind of whined about some of the repairs that we're not doing so well over on McCormick. And they came back and the road's in great shape, so good job there. Want to make sure, Mayor, that you know that I'm not attending any of the economic development meetings. And so if it's something you want to make sure that an additional council stays on that position, so we'll have three on that. I, I just, the conflict I have is, is that I have the aquatics is always in exactly the same time, so can't attend that meeting, so I
See where your priorities lead.
Yeah, I have to say. We're going to be swimming soon. So I don't know if I need to extend my resignation or you want to just do something to put somebody else in that position or whatever that all right, next step is. And then finally, I want to look at the city and the staff and say, what a horrendous year this has been. My goodness, there's all the work that's been done in this last twelve months, eleven months, if you want to call it that way. We used to do employee recognition and the COVID got in the way and all that. And I, I get the part that we probably wouldn't do it right away, but I'd sure like to see us put something in the future plan for doing some sort of employee recognition. Because we have worked their buns off. We are a high-energy council. We really have pushed people along. And I just want to say thank you for all the hard work. And if I have to, I'll apologize for all the snide comments I've made in the last whatever number of months. Appreciate that. And then finally, I was talking with Rochelle a little bit, we were talking about volunteers. We've also had a volunteer pop-up in the past. Was it hot dogs and hamburgers, I think, what it is, and hand out a bunch of pins to help them feel like they are recognized. Should do that too. You should recognize the volunteers, even in this COVID where things are slowed down a little bit for the volunteer world. Those who are volunteering are really working very difficultly. So with that, I'm done.
Thank you, Carl. Great suggestions. Kathleen.
Yeah, thanks, Carl. You kind of hit on one of the ones I had here too about the, and it, we, we, I mean, and I've been involved for years and stuff. But it usually wasn't, you know, a Christmas or holiday party because the rates were too high. So they would have it in January, February to kind of get cheap rates somewhere. But it is important to recognize our wonderful employees that we have and come to Come together and have a little bit of a, kind of some recognition and appreciation there, so. I want to thank the breakfast with Santa stand in event that we had on Saturday at the. Over by the movie theater, there was, it was horrible weather, but there was still quite, quite a few folks there. And all the volunteers that helped made that happen to raise money for the Meals on Wheels were. It was a wonderful effort, and thanks to the employees, Rochelle and Carol Cohen and Sarah Richardson, all of them, all those folks. And all the volunteers that they had to make that happen.
And I noticed I gave you a really important job, you were one of the weights on one of the corners of those.
I was, oh, no. Hold the tent down, because the tent was. Um, I do want to make sure that our, both Sandy Net and Economic Development Meetings are being filmed. Are zoomed, recorded somehow, when I look at the recent meetings that we've had, you know, library, parks, and all those are all recorded. And yet those are not, so there should be no excuse to why the Sandy Net folks can't, can't technically record the meeting on there. The library folks have some, some room.
There's no policy that they are recorded.
I understand it's not a policy, but. I understand, I'm just requesting that that happen, or I can come to the meeting and possibly. Yeah, and I can do that, I just, you know, don't want to, it's, it's much easier for all of us. If I don't come to the meeting and I just, you know, listen to it, and I just, you know, want to be, I want to understand what else is going on at those meetings. As do some other people, I would imagine, so if that's a problem, let me know, and, yeah. There is, the library folks are, are for their December meeting, kind of putting together all the list of programs that they, they're offering. Which is a huge, huge list, I want to thank Rochelle for, she's starting to work on a technical advisory committee for. Options, including the community campus park, the. Idea that we're going to have even more wilderness than we already have up near us, I, I will tell you just from an economic development standpoint. That in wilderness, you're limited to twelve people or less, there's huge amounts of restrictions that you can do in wilderness. And while we can all debate the, you know, wonderful aspects of limiting timber harvesting and all, making everything, when we, when we have such an importance. That recreation plays in our tourism, when you make everything wilderness, and when you look at a map already. You've got the Bull Run Watershed, nobody, nobody gets in there, you've got the Mount Hood, Salmon Huckleberry, the. Hatfield, the, once this over by S Clackamas. The, anyways, just about everything that you can. Draw a circle around that's basically a day use drive within Sandy is wilderness. Which means limited use, do, doing any kind of trails or bridges or anything like that, a huge effort to, to add additional facilities. You can't have, you know, roads, no campgrounds, nothing like that, so the idea that we're going to put even more wilderness out there. Is something that I don't really support from the tourism and, you know, addressing the huge growing recreation demand that we have. On the Mount Hood National Forest being an urban forest, so get off my soapbox on that, Tommy.
Hey, I just want to, I, I know it's been said a lot, so I'm gonna keep it really short, but I just wanted to say thank you to everyone that put on the Christmas tree lighting and all the other events that we've done, so. Thank you again, lastly, I, I want to echo, I think the employee recognition. Is something that we should really prioritize, especially right now, I think it's really important to remember retention over recruitment sometimes. Again, that's all I got, thank you.
All right, Kathleen already talked about the, the event up for Meals on Wheels this weekend, so I won't, I won't reiterate, but. Everybody did a great job, it was cold, I felt bad for the little kids out there in their little Christmas outfits. You know, with Santa and the Grinch, but, but it was good, so.
No sitting on his lap though.
Kudos to all those guys, so. Parks is not meeting in the month of December, so I won't have anything really to report this month on them. Couple, just little kind of housekeeping things, one, are we working to maybe trespass the individual that's sleeping in front of Mountain Loca? Every night, every night. Oh, you were, okay.
That, that, that person's been trespassing a lot of.
I know, and I know he just relocates.
And I, I have to look in our system to see if there's been trust back from that location, and of course, I wonder if they want them to trust that.
Right, I just, I just didn't know.
And I don't know if that person has requested that we do that, so I, I can check.
Yeah, chief property owner has reached out, I'll be in touch.
Perfect, and then Jordan, regarding the work session earlier, if you, maybe in your next. Managers report, or, you know, if you get some free time, right? You know, over the next couple of weeks, send council a list of, of maybe a needs list for employees. In some areas, so that we kind of have an idea of, of where you may be looking to, to staff some people, even if it's like stuff that, hey, we can't really afford right now, but. We are growing, and these are some. Pretty big projects that we have coming up, and so, you know, if we need to upstaff in some places, then we need to figure out how to do that, so.
Yeah, appreciate that. Just a quick response, internally, we have been working on it, I, I've called it level at Sandy is the plan, but. Been trying, yes, in the free time to build this framework for, for what.
I said free time lightly.
Yeah, no, but it, it is a priority for me to kind of outline that for.
I'm sure it is.
It is also a council goal in terms of, especially with resources and recognizing. You know, the other opportunities out there to increase resources and meet the service demands, and so trying to vary those two in terms of how do we operationally. Meet, you know, the requirements that our systems, now how, recognizing that. You know, we're being, there's more demands on us, and there's more projects. More staff to, to accomplish that to the level that we, we expect, thank you for that.
Yeah, yeah, I want to support you, so get us, get us a list, and then. Do we have anybody going to school board meetings?
I'm supposed to. He's on like six, he's on like six committees. Oh my gosh.
Okay, I was just curious. I know you got a ton of stuff. Yeah, 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 I get it, I, trust me, I get it, so I was just curious, I hadn't heard anything, so I was curious.
I have reached out to the chair and a couple of others.
Okay, and then my, my last thing, and maybe get with you at some point, I, I have this, like, we should do a Christmas parade.
I was thinking.
We should do a Christmas parade, and, you know, maybe the, maybe the. Sandy Mountain Festival group would like to tackle a winter parade or something, but we should do that on, and then do a Christmas tree lighting.
But maybe next year, my whole life be dedicated towards Christmas and Sandy.
Anyway, I just thought, I was thinking the other day, some friends of mine were posting pictures, I realized it's in Eastern Oregon, so you get better weather, but. Just a really cool parade that, that Renman does, and I thought, man, we could, we could do that so easy through, through Sandy, so just something.
Maybe, maybe not Highway twenty six.
Yeah, anyway, something to think about.
All right, I won't rehash a lot of what you guys have already said, but we had the tickle trot, I think it was the tenth annual, if I recall, and. Did you raise money for Action Center, I don't know how much they raised this year, but everybody helps. But really great seeing some people out there, I saw Stan's family.
We almost had you this year, Pete.
I don't know when you started that.
No, we always turn around really early. No, we always turn around early, and then as they come back, we're like, now we're in second, now we're in third.
But just a great thing that happens every year for a great cause, and, and working off the, the pre-Turkey dinners, but. People travel from all over the east side here to come to that one little, you know, thing, I know from. Brain groups, but because they love that typical pre-trail and the, just the community atmosphere there, so anyways. A great community thing, the Sandy Robotics Team, I, my son is kind of joining this, so that's why I mentioned it a couple of weeks ago, but. Did very well on one, a couple of different things down in West Salem this last Saturday, but I bring that up because they're having a big event in January here. In Sandy, and it's one of the biggest ones in the state that they always have, and, and we know from many years, I think it's the twelfth or thirteenth. Annual event, or it's been going on for robotics and Sandy for that long, we should say, but when I help judge at the last one. People from all over Washington, Oregon love that particular menu that comes down, so doing it over sixty teams. Represent from all over, so hopefully they'll be shopping, I know they will be, because we did it down in Sanlano for lunch and other places. But they are looking for some judges and those type of things, it's an all day event, we do that, but. Very, very cool what these kids do, and, 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 and how they get to grow up in some of these talents that. Merging in the world, so anyways, if you have a chance to even come and check it out. Saturday, or no, this one's in January, and I forget the date in January, but we can bring that back.
Cool, yeah, tickle trot was great, it's always my, like, I always super regret it, because I watch holiday movies. The night before and drink too much holiday cheer, and then the alarm clock goes off super early, and I regret it, and then I show up. And I think, why would I ever regret wanting to do this, you know, the whole community turns out, so it's a super specialty event, it's not part of what you do. I understand why it might not be, but you should think about it, it is, it is definitely an event worth a while. Tree lighting was great this year, thank you to our city staff and volunteers and local business owners, there's a lot of entities that come together to make. That event happen, from the NAPS, you know, donating the tree and everything at Public Works, everything, so. A great event every year, I agree, I've, I've continually said, you know, the event's wonderful, we could just continue to take it up a notch more and more of the microphones. That's just, it would be an added plus, the comp plan, I mean, just look at this month, you guys, what we're doing. This complay was a big moment, we talked about earlier, we have our transportation systems plan work session that's coming up on next Monday. That's going to be a lot of stuff, the police body cams, long term goal, we got a lot going on. And I just want to say, this is kind of the one year mark, maybe the start was a little bit on edge for everybody. But I'm really proud of this council and how we've come together as really as a team and as a working unit over the last year. I hope that I've built trust with all of you, I know you've certainly built a lot of trust and how I feel about all of you. And I just, I really appreciate the service that everybody's doing for our community, I think about possibly. Doing a one year goal setting, let me know, that's something, it wouldn't be a full blown goal setting, but kind of reviewing what we've done. I know when I first came on council, I liked doing that one year in, because you're kind of a different counselor a year in. Than you are when you first come in, you know, and it kind of changes your perspective, or maybe it reinforces, or maybe you're looking at some different things, or maybe you're prioritizing. Things differently based on what you learned, so something to think about that now that we're a year in. Then I just want to close on just Greg Brewster tonight, man, have we been blessed as a community with leaders of. Sandy net from beginning to end, and I know when. But we had the changeover that brought on Greg, it's like, you know, we were losing out on someone who's just been spectacular and standing that. Greg's a little younger in age, you know, and I thought, I was like, what, oh, you know, what's going to happen here? Holy smokes, you know, he's just done a phenomenal job, I think that was on display tonight in his preparation, and. I just, as someone who's kind of watched that happen, I'm just, I'm really proud of him and that, and, and really just, and you, Jordan, and, and, and your leadership. Team, quite honestly, at the city and how you really work with our employees and staff and, and the leadership and how they progress in their job, so. Really proud of our community tonight, guys, we're really doing a good job, so thank you, everybody, with that, I'll turn our meeting.